Do we have any announcements this evening?
The 8th grade center is proud to sponsor another blood drive with the American Red Cross on May 25th, 2018. An estimated 38 percent of Americans are eligible to give blood, but of those, less than 10 percent are actually donating each year. If you're healthy and eligible, please come out to donate. Visit the Springford website or AmericanRedCross.com to register. Thank you.
Thank you. Public to be heard on agenda items only. First off on the agenda, we have some action items. Do we have a motion for A through N?
Second.
Second, any comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to presentations. I believe Randy Shaler is here this evening. Is Randy here? From Zeswick Music?
It's Tom Kelly.
Oh, wow. Randy, Tom, it's all the same.
Check, check, one, two. There we go. Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've asked the instrumental music staff and choral staff and those that are involved in the instrumental music program, as well as the choral program here in Springford. My name is Tom Kelly. I'm the education representative from Zeswick's Music. I've had the opportunity to work with the Springford School District for nearly three decades. And yes, I started mine when I was 12. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you tonight, but it really comes down to the award that is being presented to the community, the administration, the staff, the parents, and the students. Zeswick's Music is a part of the NAMM Foundation, which is the National Association of Music Merchants. And 13 years ago, the NAMM Foundation developed a program where school districts across the country could actually apply for this particular accolade. It's the Best Communities for Music Education. Many, many schools have tried, and this being the second or third, second in a row. Some don't get it, one in a row. This year, nearly 5,000 school districts across the country applied for this particular accolade. 527 were worthy and were awarded this particular award. Now, a little bit of background on this particular application process. It isn't a good old boys or good old girls club, just fill it out and send it in. It is evaluated by Kansas State University, a separate entity outside of the NAMM Foundation, to evaluate each application. I'm not sure who filled it out or was involved in filling it out. It's 25, 26 pages of documentation, a lot of essay questions asking about the performance opportunities, the educational opportunities, and everything that's involved in the music program here in Springford. So kudos to you. I do have a plaque that will be presented to the entire music department. Public Relations PAC did, was sent to you. Feel free to plaster this all over. But the folks that are standing to my left, behind me, are really the ones responsible. They are the ones that are dedicated to their craft and their discipline. Each of them are wonderful to work with. Some of them I've worked with for many, many years, even prior to Springford. So it's good that you've gotten them into your fold now. Certainly the dedication of the administration to continue to support these musical opportunities for young students. The data shows that music makes you smarter. It's one of the reasons why the United States government actually last year said that music is a core subject. I don't know where Pennsylvania stands exactly. I think it's up to each individual school district to actually bring that into their fold. But again, that speaks volumes, that if you look at the data, the test scores, that those students that are involved in music actually do better academically. Discipline, responsibility, all of those things that come into it. But it's through these individuals that that kind of discipline is brought down to the elementary, the middle school, and the high school ever. I deal with all of them on a weekly basis. So again, I continue to see the progress. So I'm very, very proud to present Dr. Gooden to you, the board, other staff members that are here tonight, the NAMM Foundation. Placard, it says, "Salutes Springford Area School District for Outstanding Support of Music Education, Enriching the Lives of Children, and Advancing Student Achievement." So on behalf of Zeswick's Music, the NAMM Foundation, I'd like to congratulate all of you and thank you.
As you have eloquently put, we have an amazing staff here, here at Springford. And it's a great night because you're also going to witness the recognition that we've, and the success that we've had this past year in our music programs. So the hard work and the dedication by the staff is just amazing. And, you know, they're able, they work extremely hard with our students and, you know, push and make them provide the best that they are. And they're just an incredible, they're just an incredible organization. The kids are incredible. So thank you very much. So with that, I believe, Mr. Jones, you're going to do one or two presentations, or three or four?
Yeah.
What's that?
I think Ms. Jennings.
Oh, Ms. Jennings, you're going to start first?
Yes.
Okay. I got, I got bad intel.
All right.
So, all right, well, Ms. Jennings, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeBella.
You're going to focus on the middle school this evening.
First, as the music department chair, I would like to congratulate the students and the staff of the music department on their many achievements over the past year. With the hard work and commitment to excellence that you demonstrate in everything you do, there's no surprise in the goals that you have reached and the achievements that you have earned this year. I want to thank the school board for taking this time tonight to recognize the accomplishments of our students, ensembles, and music educators. They are all accomplishments that deserve to be recognized and applauded, so I thank you. This is the second year in a row that Springford has been selected for this particular honor. And it's not only recognizing the outstanding efforts of our music teachers and our students, but also for our administrators, parents, and community leaders who have made music education part of a well-rounded education in our community. We have been selected because we demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment and access to music education, and a longstanding relationship that our district has with Zeswick's Music is one of the main reasons for that. Tom Kelly, Randy Shaler, and Zeswick's Music do an amazing job with our Meet the Instrument Night, which we have for our 3rd grade students who are deciding what band or string instrument they want to learn. And the support that we get through Zeswick's throughout the year is second to none. So once again, I want to thank Zeswick's for that. At this time, I would like the members of the 2017-18 Middle School Indoor Guard, along with their instructors, if you would please come to the center at this time. Can I give it to them afterwards?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Ladies, if you could please come to the center. Come on now. This year, the Middle School Indoor Guard was undefeated in Tournament Indoor Association Competition, won first place in the Cavalcade Indoor Association, became TIA Region 3 Champions, and Atlantic Coast Champions in the Middle School Division. Since the inception of the Middle School Program, the group has received 13 medals in five years of championship competition. Nine for first place, three for second place, and one for third place. The program has grown every year since its inception, starting with 12 members the first year, 16 the second, 23 the third, and 30 members each of the last two years, which is the maximum allowed by circuit rules. This year, the Middle School Indoor Program graduates 21 8th graders who will be headed to our high school program. So at this time, if you would please give a round of applause to our Middle School Indoor Guard.
Hello. Hey, what's next?
I can attest to that because right now in my registration, we have over 40 Color Guard members registered for marching band next year, which is impressive. That's going to be a lot of fabric on the field. It's going to look really cool. Could I please call up the members of the High School Winner Guard, please? We're going to recognize our High School Winner Guard team. So if you're a High School Winner Guard member, can you come up here to the center, please? This year, our High School Winner Guard Program was also crowned Circuit Champions for the Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network. And not only did they win one class, they actually won two. And both were crowned Cavalcade Championships, as well as Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network Championships, for the Scholastic Novice Class, which is first and second year members, and for the Scholastic National A Class, which is for national level high school programs that compete at the national level. And it was pretty cool because we, we won both. It was really fun. And the High School Color Guard Program is also growing. This year, we had quite a number of students join. It was the largest it's ever been, and it's getting to be kind of a cool thing as we keep growing in our music department here. So congratulations to the students. We have Ms. Danielle Marone, our Color Guard Director, here with us as well tonight, who has done a fantastic job of building and putting this thing together. We had 13 Color Guard Directors in 15 years at Springford before Danielle got here, and clearly she's done the right thing over the last four years that she's been here. Congratulations to our Color Guard members from the high school. Okay. And guard members, you can just stay if you were in marching band. Can I have all of the High School Marching Band members come up? We realized when we are recognizing guard that we forgot to recognize the marching band program for winning the championship in November, so can we have High School Marching Band members come up as well? substantial effort. We had over 160 members in the group this year, which was pretty cool. They were once again asked to perform finals at the Bands of America Regional in Delaware this year. Only four high schools from the state of Pennsylvania were asked to perform in finals at a BOA Regional in the country this year. And then we also were crowned the Champions of the Patriot Open Class for cavalcade of bands. This year, it was in Allentown back in November. The membership this year worked really hard. It was the largest band I've had yet, and we had to do a lot of work. We kind of tried some new stuff with show design this year, which panned out really well. We spent a lot of money on electronics because that is the new thing for marching band. And I, the one thing I really love about the music department in Springford is that we've really learned how to teach good humans, that we sometimes learn how to play instruments on the side. But we've been teaching really good humans over the last few years, and I'm really proud of these students. They have worked really hard and deserve all of the accolades they get. So we are recognizing tonight the High School Marching Band for being crowned Champions for the 18th time in our history. Thank you. So band members, when I'm done, I'll be at the, I'll be over there at the door, and I'll give you all your resolutions, okay? Did Mrs. Crew get in front? I wasn't sure. Okay, band members, if you are not Dylan, Dylan, Morgan, or Charlie, can you go to the side?
Sure.
I'm going to do the next four just together. The band program this year had four students that were recognized at the district level and ascended to District 11 Band this year. And those four, that's actually a really competitive thing. Nearly 1,100 students compete for about 200 spots at District 11 Level, and we were lucky that we had four band members make it to District 11. And the four that were asked this year are the four that are remaining. They're all seniors, and I'm really sad that they're leaving. But we have here Charlie Nawa, Morgan Turner, Dylan Kinsara, and Dylan Rumsey, performed with District 11 way back in January. And then in the system, students are then promoted based on how they audition and re-audition. And Charlie, Morgan, and Dylan on the far side were also performed this year with Pennsylvania All-State Ensembles. They made it through the district system, the region system, and then the all-state system. And that is quite an accomplishment here in PMEA, not only in Pennsylvania to be asked as a district-level musician, but then also as an all-state musician. And so if possible, if their parents are here, we'd love to have the parents come down and get a photo with them for their achievements this year with PMEA, to our four-band all-state musi, sorry, district and all-state musicians. Yeah, congratulations. I just want to also, two people I really want to thank, and one is actually Erin Crew, who did a lot of work on the Best Communities for Music Education application. She did actually a surmountable amount of work on that application, and I think we should recognize her for her efforts in that regard. And then just as I close out, we had a wonderful year with the band program, teaching good humans, and it was pretty cool. And I just want to thank, first of all, our school board, our administration, all of our administrators, and families that are here. Without your support, I don't think we can do the great things we can do. And I'm just loving the rocket ship ride we're on these couple of years, and it's all because of you. It's because of the students. It's because of our families, and it's super fun. So although the year is ending, I'm getting excited for the next year, but thank you so much for everything you all do for us every day. It's awesome.
I'm Emily McGrannahan, and I'm going to invite the choir and orchestra students who have made districts and regionals to please come up. Peter, Amel, Rachel, and Ingrid, can you come up here, please? So I'll start with Ingrid. Ingrid is an orchestra student. She's a violinist. And as Mr. Jones said, I don't have to reiterate all the steps they had to go through, but violin is one of the toughest instruments in District 11. You have to understand, we're competing with the people who live around towards Philly, so all Montgomery County. We have some of the strongest orchestra students around, and Ingrid was one of 40 violinists out of 154 that tried out this year, that attempted to make district orchestra, and then she earned a spot for region orchestra also. The next three, two of which are mine, Peter and Rachel are also orchestra students, so I'd like to attribute that to them getting to choir. No, I'm just kidding. Peter made region, district and region choir this year, and Rachel and Amel both made district choir. Again, I am sorry. Oh, you one made regions too. I'm sorry. Misinformation? No. So congratulations to you all. Again, this process was, is very difficult for choir students to get into. We're just musically very sound in Montgomerys and Bucks Counties. We did host district choir here, and so it was a lot of fun to see Mrs. Hude and her mentor from Ethica College come down, and Dr. Dobler, and he was the choir director, and the kids loved him. They had a lot of fun. He was very interesting to work with. So in a couple of years, we're slated to host orchestra, and thank you all. Can I invite your parents up to get a photo real quick, please? Thank you for all the support you've given the strings program. This year, we put on the String Jamboree with 560 students out into the gym, and it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of students, and it was a lot of really good playing this year. So thank you, everyone, for your support. Thank you, parents.
I know we, and you guys did a great job moving along. I don't know, is the middle school Color Guard coaches still here? Because they kind of stood off to the side. Annette, Dawn, and Stephanie, you still here? Did they leave?
No.
Where they, come on, come on over. When, when they, oh, just come over, because you guys kind of stood off to the side, and I didn't get a chance to introduce you, so.
It's about the kids.
I know, but still, you guys just did an incredible job, so I just wanted to make sure that you got recognized as well. So this is the coaching or?
The staff.
The staff. Do you want to just introduce yourself?
I'm Annette Ederson, I'm the captain head here, and I have a lovely staff and we share responsibilities. Oh, my God. Who was a former student who disappeared the first year that I was here, and she came back, so I guess either she liked me or I did something right.
Well, there you go. Well, thank you very much. And that, and that just displays a selfless act that, I mean, they just stood off to the side, and it was all about the kids, but I wanted to make sure that they receive the recognition that they so deserve as well. So somebody that also deserves a lot of recognition from time to time, Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you, Mr. DeBella. I'm going to invite our boys lacrosse team to center stage. But first, on behalf of the athletic department, and all of our teams, our players, and our coaches, congratulations to our music people. It's phenomenal what they do every year, and they also make Friday nights very special for us, the marching band as well. But, you know, we talk about what young people can do and why we're in education. You saw the reasons why we're in education, is these young ladies and young men that are up here this evening. We're very proud of those people who walk our hallways and represent Springford. So congratulations to everyone in the music department, and also now we want to present to you our athletics, our athletes. So on behalf of our athletic department as well, Mr. DeBella, we'd like to thank the school board for the recognition that is given to our athletic teams, to our administration for the support and recognition they do give, to our teaching staff for their support, and to the community. It's very special, the support that we receive, and we're very excited and very proud to be a RAM. And so tonight, we would like to introduce you to a few people who have done some special things this spring. First is our boys lacrosse team, and we have a few of the members with us tonight. I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves real quick. And Coach Kevin Donnelly is our head coach. Just so you know, before I go into some of the particulars, they play tomorrow here in Coach McNally Stadium at 4:00 PM against Downingtown East. The winner of that game goes into the state tournament. So if you have nothing going on tomorrow at 4:00 PM, or, Mr. Jones, if you'd like to bring some members of the band over to have a little pep band? Or if anyone in the chorus would like to sing the National Anthem, we'd be all for it tomorrow. But we appreciate your support for tomorrow if you can. But our boys are standing up here in front of you because they won their eighth Pioneer Athletic Conference Championship in a row, and their ninth overall. Not only are they a terrific team, but Coach Donnelly, and Coach Zaper, and Coach Monzo do a tremendous job with this staff, instilling discipline, and pride, and integrity. And so when you can do all the right things and win on top, that's very special. So we'd like to congratulate them. They defeated Boyertown 10-7 in the semifinals of the Pioneer Athletic Conference Final Four, Final Four, and then defeated Perkiumon Valley, one of the arch-nemesis, 13-9 in the championship game. They finished the regular season at nine wins and zero losses in the conference. So on behalf of all of us, we'd like to congratulate you for a job well done. Did I ask if they could shake hands? I said yes. Will the boys tennis team and their managers please come forward? Also, I would mention that our baseball and softball teams open up district play. They both received a bye. They're both second in the power rankings. They both have a second seed. They open up both at home on Wednesday. Baseball will be over here at 4 o'clock, and softball up in their stadium at 4:00 PM. If you have nothing going on Wednesday, we'd love to have you come support. Our boys tennis team finished the regular season with 10 wins and one loss. In doing so, they won their second Pac Championship in school history, and once again, I'm very proud to say that Coach Brennan, Coach Kissel, and Coach Rendick do all the right things. This is tremendous young men, not, not just on the court. This is tremendous young men, not, not just on the court and in the play of tennis, but in our hallways, and how they represent your community and our community. So I want to congratulate them for a season well done. Congratulations. So now quickly, gentlemen, introduce yourself, real quick. Thank you. Now, will Mauchu Pasquale please step forward? Pasquale. Mauchu Pasquale won the Pioneer Athletic Conference singles this year. He won it in three sets, he lost the first set four of the six, but said, "That's it, I'm coming back." Won the next two, six to two, and six to two. And he also qualified for the district tournament. One unique thing, his brother Patrick, if you all remember, was a three-time PAC champion, stood up here three times. Mauchu is a sophomore. He has a chance to tie for the bragging rights in the family. Mauchu, not putting any pressure on, but we know you can do it. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you.
Well, Mary Pat, we'll pause for just a second, but I wanted to say that, what an evening, that we're able to recognize probably close to two-hundred students or more, when you look at the number of participants, starting at the middle school, high school, and both the music and, and athletics. So this is why Springford has been ranked and nationally recognized as in the top seven percent, not only academically, but what, what these students and what they work so hard for, and the success that they bring to themselves and the community and the district as well. So all the support that we could provide is always, is always on the top of our list. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Pat, uh, Ms. Long, sorry. Principal over at Brook Elementary.
Thanks, Mr. Dibella. Well, hello, everyone, and good evening. Tonight, we're going to do a short presentation on the ELD, English Language Development Program, which, for the K-4 students, is based out of Brook Elementary. We have a short video to show you, which I think Mrs. Buckwalter's ready to queue up, and then we'll have a few comments after.
The English Language Development Program in the Springford Area School District emphasizes the development of all four language domains: reading, writing, listening, and speaking. It is designed to meet all district and state standards. With the help of our ESL teachers, students in our district have the opportunity to learn English language and culture.
When students register here in Springford Area School District at any school in the United States, their parents have to fill out a home language survey. If any other language is on that home language survey, we first call the parents and decide whether or not the students need to be tested. They are given an English language proficiency assessment, and from there, we decide if they need services or not.
When we first screen them, we use what's called a WITA screener, and the WITA screener measures their listening, reading, speaking, and writing, and if they qualify based off of that, that's when they come with us. Now, every year, all the students also take what's called a WITA access test, which is very similar. It also measures their English proficiency in reading, listening, speaking, and writing, and based on those scores and teacher input and other assessments, we determine their need of instruction and their services for the following year as well. At 5:06, the ELD program takes the place of their ELA block, so all of the students that qualify come to me during that time, and I'm still in charge of their grades and the grade level curriculum, but I'm able to modify as needed depending on the students' needs.
The ELD program for grades nine through twelve ranges from the beginning level, which includes phonics, and it goes to the fifth level, which will enable students at the high school to read at a ninth grade level. Most students receive instruction one to two periods per day, and the more they need, the more the instruction time. Once they are able to meet the exit criteria, they are mainstreamed into the regular English classroom, but are also monitored for two years.
All K-4 students who qualify are invited and encouraged to attend Brook, where they can receive a full language arts block of instruction daily from one of our ESL teachers who are there.
Being in one building allows us to give them the maximum amount of instruction and multitude of resources, and we are also able to take the kids on multiple field trips throughout the year, so they are able to engage in the community around them as well.
Some students start with us in kindergarten, knowing no English, just speaking their first language in their home. Some students move here in the middle of the year, coming from another country, knowing no English whatsoever, so it really varies from student to student. In my classroom, I would say I have over ten different languages.
They're exposed to grade level material, we're covering the same skills that are being covered in their class, and it's amazing to see the progress that they've made between knowing very little English to becoming proficient in the English language.
Not only do I teach the students English, they also teach me a wealth of information about their countries and their cultures.
This year, I was lucky enough to receive three impact awards from three little girls I had that came here in second grade. One from Mexico, one who was adopted from Ukraine, and one who was from China. And all three of these girls are going to great universities right here in Philadelphia, and I feel like they deserve the award that day.
Well, I hope you enjoyed that overview of the ELD program. As you could see from the video, there's a few of our ELD teachers who were able to make it here this evening. Mrs. Serniglia, and Ms. Lacy, and Mrs. Chester. Ms. Lacy and Mrs. Chester are both at Brook Elementary, our K-4 building. Every day, Mrs. Serniglia is at the 5:06, and in addition to that, she's at a multitude of three or four elementaries for students whose families have opted to have their students stay at their home school, and they receive some of the ELD instruction during the week, not quite as intense as those students who opted to come to Brook Elementary. Also this evening, Mrs. Gina Rummenelli is here. She's representing our homeroom teachers, our day-in, day-out teachers, because the vast majority of the time that our students are in school, even if they are in the program, they're with all the other teachers that are part of their regular schedule for the, for the entire day. And those are the teachers that are responsible for most of their, their day. They have an awesome support from the ELD teachers, but the specialists and the homeroom teachers, or the teachers that the students switch to, also are responsible for kind of bringing along those, those skills along the way. We also have one of our high school students here with you. I'm going to have Mrs. Chester tell you a little bit about a program that she started a few years ago, when the program was based out of Oaks Elementary, and that program, mentoring with some of the seniors has, and some of the other high school students, has made its way over to Brook Elementary.
Hi. Again, my name's Tara Chester. I've been one of the elementary ESL or ELD teachers for the past, I think, fourteen years, Beth, I think, I don't know. We have students from all over the world, and actually, one here, Christina, was one of the students that kind of spearheaded a high school kindergarten mentor program that's evolved over the past few years, because she called and said, "Can I come down and work with some of your students and speak Spanish to them?" I was like, "If you want, sure." So this has evolved into a program, we have every, every other Friday, we have about twenty different high school students that come over to Brook and work with our kindergarten students in the afternoon, and the kindergarten students really loved it this year, and every, every day, they would ask, "Are the high school kids coming? Are the high school kids coming?" So Christina's idea evolved into a really meaningful experience for both the high school students and the kindergarten students. So I'm going to call her up now, so she can tell you about her experience in ELD herself, when she came in second grade, and then we have some of her friends here, who that she's worked with, that are going to talk about their experience. Okay?
Okay, my name's Christina. I moved to the United States when I was seven. I came for second grade, and it was really scary. I was moving from a different country into a new culture of people I didn't know. It was my first time riding the school bus. It was my first time going to school where they spoke English, and I did not speak a word of English. It was really scary, but the ELD program really just helped me feel accepted. It was a place where I could go and I knew I could make mistakes. It was a place where I could learn, and Mrs. Chester was my ELD teacher, and she's amazing. Like, she taught me English. It was incredible. I loved going there, I loved learning. We did so many activities, and it really impacted me and my life, and I just wanted to come back and help some more, so I came back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Share what your plans are for next year.
Oh, I'm going to St. Joe's University to study international studies, hopefully travel, learn some more languages, yeah, help out.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Marissa Lacy. I am one of the ELD teachers here in the district. I'm a Springford graduate, actually, and this is my second year in the district and at Brook Elementary. We have two of our students here with us today. Come on up. We're just going to have, ask them some questions, have them share a little bit. Okay, so what is your name?
Ivana.
And what grade are you in, Ivana?
Second.
What is your favorite thing about having our high school students come and help us in school?
They like, they make learning fun.
And Ivana, where are you from?
Mexico.
And what languages do you speak?
Spanish and English.
Okay, and what is your name?
Jonathan.
And Jonathan, where are you from?
Albania.
And what languages do you speak?
America.
English.
And English.
And Albania, very good. And what is your favorite part about having the high school students come and help us at school?
My favorite part is playing the... driving games.
Good job.
Well, thanks to all our supporting players. And any questions about the program that hasn't already been answered?
I just want to make sure I heard something correctly. Did one of the teachers say that there are ten different languages? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, Ms. Lacy said that, and that's just with the students that she works with. Our other four teachers...
That's incredible.
Yeah.
Oh, do you do it.
They're, they're quite an amazing crew, that's for sure.
I, I mean, I think one time I heard, I don't know if the number's right, but we, I think there's like forty or fifty different languages that we see in the district?
And it can, it can vary year to year, because certainly, tomorrow, we could have another family move in that represents a language that we don't even have currently with any of our students right now, and then another family might need to move for some reason. Lots of times, it's for job relocations, maybe they're working for an international company, and there's an opportunity elsewhere, so it ebbs and flows.
And how long have high school kids been coming down to help, to work, and be...
That started, this is the third year that Mrs. Chester, so it was two years at Oaks, and now this is the first year at Brook.
The kids, I guess, they love it, both at the, at the elementary and the high school kids, they...
I know, it's, it's, it's awesome. They come in totally pumped, and the students look forward to it every other week. It's awesome.
So when everybody reaches ninth grade, they are all at pretty much the same ninth grade reading level? Did I hear that correctly?
Well, that really depends, Dr. Dressler, because some of the students may just have arrived as an eighth grade student, so if they arrived as an eighth grade student with absolutely no English, then they're kind of behind that curve.
Yeah, of course.
And obviously, the goal is to try and move everybody along, so that by the time they're leaving Springford, either as a Springford graduate, or even just whatever short amount of time they do spend with us, that we've just brought their English language skills along from what they were when they first enrolled here.
Well, you seem to be doing a phenomenal job.
Well, I can't take the credit, it's a lot of these great people and the hard work of the students, for sure.
And I just want to mention, my sister is actually in this program at Brook, and she definitely benefited from this, and what you guys are doing is awesome. She likes, oh my gosh, she compliments you guys like twenty-four-seven, and she loves reading the books that she gets and everything, so.
Thanks for the shout-out. Okay, anything further?
Well, you guys, Mr. Dress, Dr. Dressler said, you guys are doing an incredible job, because these, these kids coming here, not knowing the language, put into the school system, I mean, it's just a lot to absorb quickly, and, and if you have the patience and the, and the work with, with the students the way you do, and then incorporating the high school students, I think that's a great idea, and I'm glad to see that's so successful. So thank you for accomplishing what you do, because, like you said, it might be ten languages this week, it could be fifteen lang, I mean, you just don't know, and so that's an awesome job, so thank you very much.
Well, thanks for your kind words.
What, what a night of presentations. I would hate to be the next person to follow up with this. Who's up? Who's on, what's on the agenda? Oh, Mr. Fink, CFO, to present the, oh, the eighteen-nineteen proposed final budget. No pressure. Not everybody's on a high, you know, and it's, you know.
Yeah, so you all thought that was exciting. Wait till you get this. Let's talk some numbers, and thanks for that fine introduction, too. Appreciate that. Man, I'm dropping stuff. Well, we've had a pretty packed agenda so far with more to come, so I am going to dive right in and take a quick peek at what we're going to look to cover tonight with the proposed final budget for next year. Sound like a broken record in some places. Go through the chal, yes. Am I not talking loud enough? Is that better? Sing a song? Okay. No, no singing. Okay, we'll go through the challenges of doing the bu... Again, thank you for the kind introduction. Go through the expenditures and revenue changes, tax impact to fulfill any gaps we may have, look at how we compare to other districts in our area, and go through the next steps in the timeline. So what are the challenges? And I said broken record, because it seems like every year around this time, saying the same thing, which is, the state doesn't have their budget passed yet, so it's difficult to do ours, but we do the best we can. At least, we're not in a terrible crisis that I've heard of so far, so that's pretty good, as we were the first year I did this. So, but they do give us preliminary numbers for our subsidies for education, special ed, transportation, and so on. They gave us those about two months ago, so we do have an idea. In my recent past, they have generally met those numbers, so I'm, I'm pretty comfortable there. Will they exceed them? They haven't since I've been here, so. One of the other challenges we have is in our education area, special education area, where those, that crew does a phenomenal job working with our special ed students, one of the best programs around. I understand from talking with people, both on committee, on the board, and in the public, that, you know, folks move into our district for our special ed program. I've heard that said numerous times, which is a fabulous thing. Of course, it comes with a cost as well, and so we do have some increases in that area. One thing I did, of course, want to point... One thing I did, of course, want to point out is that our annual budget there is in the $35 million area. Funding from the state, inclusive of our PISA subsidy and our FICA subsidy, comes to about just under $6 million, so less than 20% is actually funded by the state for those programs. We do those pretty much locally. So lastly, I'll point out, as everybody knows, we did the professional contract. The board approved that last August. In that contract, of course, there were increases built in, so, you know, changes year over year. This year's change, all in, including the benefit-related pieces, are about 5.1%. So that's going to have an impact as well. So if we look at the expense side of the ledger, looking at where the major items are year over year, we can take a peek at the employee increase, look at the professional employee increases. This is not the addition of new employees, this is just going from one year to the next, all in with benefits and such, about 3.0, almost $3.7 million. Looking at the non-professional employee increases, the support staff, administration and such, about $733,000 in increases year over year. No changes, no new additions. If we look at the additional staff we're looking at, again, special education, based on the needs of students coming into the district and the needs, I guess, of students becoming of age and getting into our programs currently, we are looking at a need to add some special education teachers and aides. We project that those will cost approximately $723,000, all in, again, with medical benefits and such. Professional staff, we're looking at adding, my estimates are adding about 75 new students district-wide next year, so we're looking at adding some teachers to help fulfill some of that as well, to the tune of about $330,000. And also, we've been talking about in this room, in committee, outside, about adding security personnel in our buildings as well. We project that that will be about $189,000. And then, of course, looking at tech to support some of our modernized learning programs, as well as some administrative support changes, some guidance counselors, I think we're bringing from part-time to full-time, that type of thing, about another $188,000. So total personnel additions, along with just increases from year over year, about $5.8 million. We're looking at increasing there. So looking at non-personnel-related things, you see special education there once again. This is more related to services that we provide to our special education students outside of these walls. So, or they could be service providers that come inside of these walls as well. We do try to balance the need as far as economically and what is best for the students, of course, to determine whether it should be an outside placement or outside resource versus hiring a resource as well. So we're looking at that change. Transportation increases about $250,000. Keeping in mind, we do have an increase in our transportation contract this year as well. You'll see later on in the agenda, as you read down the approval of the Western Center Budget, which is also in there to be approved. And based on the calculation on five-year trailing ADMs, our tuition cost is going to go up about $100,000, which means our students are participating more, which is a good. Finally, to a good note, well, they're all good notes, but finally, to a fiscal good note, is our debt service will drop approximately $400,000 this year, based on some of the moves we recently did in the prior year and in the current year. So all in, we're looking at the expense side of the budget increasing approximately $6.6 million. And if we look at this, I'll kind of talk slowly so you can digest some of that. Looking at this from a line-by-line basis, you can still see that the increase is of about $6.6 million to $164.4 million budget, an increase of about 4.2% year over year. Obviously, as we talked about on the prior slide, most of those changes come in the personnel, in the personnel area. Looking at the revenue side of the ledger, looking at the local, which still comprises about 80% of our total budget, the assessment values overall in the district are up about 1.5% from prior year. We're sitting at about $3.98 billion in assessments. I'm still looking and hoping that we can get to a $4 billion mark. That's a number I like. But we're looking at adding about $1.5 million on that line. And our collection rate for local property taxes and other taxes remains at about 98%. You recall, a few years back, it was around 95%, 96%. You know, the rising tide lifts all ships, so I see the economy is doing better, things are starting to come in on time. The negative impact, if there is any really, is that our tax collections on delinquents will go down as people pay their taxes more on time. That inventory of delinquent taxes decreases. So we're expecting that to drop a little bit. Our state, our state side of the revenue, that comprises about 20% of the total budget, again, I spoke a little bit about the numbers that the state provided for the basic education funding subsidy and the special ed subsidy about, here's an interesting thing that I went through earlier was, I was looking at the increase in our PISA's rate year over year, which is just under 100 basis points, applying that to our current employee staff. I think it equates to something around $200,000 increase year over year in PISA's cost, and we're getting an increase in our subsidy of 140, so we're kind of net negative on that. Special ed, I mentioned before, due to the increased needs and the great work that those folks do in that department, you know, we're looking at increasing, you know, $1 to $1.5 million somewhere in that neighborhood. We're getting $50,000 help from the state to make that happen. So a little lopsided there, in my personal opinion. Increases to the PISA's overall, this is basically just the 50% subsidy that we get back from the state, about $900,000, and also an increase in the transportation subsidy. We get about 30% of our total bill back on that. So that'll be that increase. The federal is not really worth talking about, less than 1% of our budget, doesn't really do much. So we're looking to add about $2.26 million. On the revenue side, you can see up to about $153.6 million in revenues, or 1.4% increase in revenues compared to the 4.2% expenses that we had. So if I look at the two, oop, did I go too far? Nope, I didn't. So if I look at the two together, along with some other things that we've talked about over the years and we talk about in committee, we're talking about a gap after all of those things happen, using some of the reserves that we have up until we get to the debt cliff that I know everybody's tired of me talking about. That's the exciting part. The exciting part is the debt cliff. It's coming. But once we can do that and we can offset some of those reserves that the district has smartly put aside over the past number of years, we can lessen the impact to the So we're looking at a gap of about $2.4 million. If I put that in tax rate language, that equals a tax increase necessary to bridge that gap of about 2.35%. And you can see, I also listed some of the tax changes in the prior years as well. But one thing I also found interesting, too, was the trend of the, I keep doing that, I pointed up the screen and it's really over there. I do that all the time. But if I look at, you know, where we've been in five-year blocks, it's an interesting story that tells me, you know, the past five years, including this one coming, about 1.24% average over those years of tax changes, you know, 2014, about 2.6, and then 2004, 2008, about 4.1. So it's interesting to see how that number has declined over the years. Sometimes there's ups and downs throughout there in the details, but generally, that's the trend. So how do we compare to other districts? I actually did this based on this current year's data, only because I don't know what everybody else is going to be doing just yet, but I wanted to fit it in there and just say, you know, where we are this year, we're the sixth lowest mileage rate in the area. And if we added on what we're doing, nothing else changed anywhere else, we'd be at a mileage rate of 26.8599, we'd still fit in that same slot, depending what everybody else is doing. So that's an interesting move, too. So, you know, looking at some of the other states, again, we're the third highest student population in the area, lowest, fifth lowest per student cost, and the sixth lowest mileage or tax rate in the area as well. So the next steps. Where do we go from here? So law says that we have to have the proposed final budget adopted by May 31st. So what we will do is we will have this on the agenda for next week for you folks to vote on and hopefully adopt. And then what we will do, Mrs. David, Hiser, myself and my staff will make the final proposed budget public, giving us the 20-day count. We'll make the necessary legal notices that we need to do for the purposes of having the final budget adopted on, at the work session meeting, which was a discussion that we had in not the last, right, Mr. DeBella, not the last finance committee, the one before that with the tax legislators, where they clearly said, wow, more time in getting those bills prepared, the cross-checking and checks and balances in place for the tax bills to go out on July 1st. I'm getting ahead of myself. So that's where we are. I'm happy to do my best to take any comments or questions.
Well, thank you for the presentation. As always, very thorough and very, you know, precise and short, which is a good thing because you don't need to get into, but, you know, again, I think we've talked about this, is, you know, what you've been able to do in the finance office as far as putting a seven-year rolling budget forward and how we're able to project and look forward, as well as knowing where we are currently and how each of the changes, how it impacts the current year and then each year after that. So it's, you know, it's an excellent position for the district to be in. We knew this was coming. I mean, we had a contract negotiation last year where we had numerous parents come to the meeting and tell us, you know, to work with the staff, which we gladly did. And then, you know, we do have a top-notch special education program in the area, and like you said, it does come with a cost. There are many things that are mandated by the state that they don't fund, and it's unfortunate to have that much of a gap. I mean, do we go above and beyond? Probably in some areas we do, and that's because we care as far as what we're doing for our students with special needs, and it's the right thing to do. But on the flip side, you know, the state should take more ownership as well in providing funding. I know I've been down in Harrisburg many times and said that, you know, all of that funding should be, you know, come from the state, you know, but they don't necessarily agree with me on that. But, you know, it is our responsibility to provide for those students, and, you know, thank you for that. But to show the difference of, what was it, almost $30 million between what our costs are versus what the state is giving us, I mean, they got to help close the gap somewhere. And I'm glad you also pointed out the shell game, that PISA's goes up, our contributions to PISA's go up, and then the state reimbursement is always very close to what that, and so they give it and then they take it away. So, and I know that's why when we're doing budgeting, we're kind of budgeting from what we received last year and, you know, but I don't, I know that chair in finance and, you know, I wasn't thrilled with the outcome of where we're at. I wanted and hope that we could do more, but then it comes with, that comes with an impact, in most instances, a negative impact to the district as well, as where, you know, if we start cutting to, you know, to try to refine that to $2.5 million. It's, you know, important to point out that as students, you know, as the district grows and we have more students coming into the district, it does require additional staff. And that provides us the ability to keeping class sizes relatively to where they've been. You know, if we didn't bring in the staff, obviously, class sizes would grow. And I know from a community standpoint that they're dead set against that, and we do our best to stay within the guidelines that we established, you know, several years ago. But it's tough. It really is tough. I mean, for us to be pretty much at the index this year as far as, and we haven't really been at index for several years, we've always come in lower. But again, no surprise, nobody should be surprised, we knew this was coming. And it is what it is at this point.
Jim, could you just, could you go back over what the impact is to the taxpayers quickly?
So the index this year, by the way, I didn't mention, if you didn't know already, the index this year was 2.4%. And addition to that, we secured another 1.23% in referendum exceptions relating to special ed and, they don't do debt anymore, what's the other one? PISA's. Yeah. So a total of, you know, 3.6 something percent is at our, not saying we want to go there, I'm just saying that was what was available to us.
Jim, maybe off the top of your head, but the 2.35% per $100,000 assessment will equal roughly about $100 or?
$61.57.
Oh, it's up there, I didn't, I was looking at the last column. Actually, I want to see if anyone was paying attention.
Yeah.
I hear a lot of talking over this table.
I was starting to do numbers in my head, so that was.
But, yeah, so, I mean, and just showing, you know, what we recognize in this evening, you can see, you know, it's money, from a community standpoint, very well spent.
Could you review with the additional staff how many people it is and what they're going to do?
Sure. We have, hang on, I'm just flipping back to that place there. I know we have, in their new staff, we have four additional special education teachers. We have 10 instructional aides. We have three additional professional staff, not exactly sure where they're going to lay out yet, we just know the numbers are rising and we need to apply. We have two security personnel included in there, and we have two, I think it's two techs, right, am I right when I say that? Two techs, and I know we're bringing a number of 10-month techs to full-time. We have the need to do that, especially since the summertime is when they do most of their work. And we're bringing three guidance counselors, is it guidance counselors over there? No? Psychologists, thank you. Yeah, psychologists to, to full-time.
So what are the three professional staff, what are those positions?
Those positions are there to meet the need for, meet the need for increasing student population. We know we're going to.
But what are they? What are those?
They're not yet identified. That's the work that I do pretty much all of July with class size for elementary as enrollments are coming in, as well as work with Dr. Nugent, Dr. Siggin, Dr. Wannvaughn, and Mrs. Nunaville are on the staffing across the buildings at the secondary, at the upper levels. So they're not identified at this point, but it's still too early in the process. Kindergarten registrations are just taking place, as well as straight-line projections and any movement across the district. So that's been about the average in those areas as we look at retirements and always look to make sure that if we have to refill the teaching spot at that time.
And then the two security personnels, one of them, this position that's on the agenda for the description to be approved?
That's correct.
I have questions on that, maybe I'll wait till we get that on the agenda. At the extracurricular committee, we talked about adding second teams for the middle school and bowling. Is that in the budget?
Yes, it is.
And then on the sixth slide, you've got that the collection rate remains steady, but then delinquent tax collections are decreasing. Wouldn't, isn't that inconsistent?
No, it's not, actually. What that means is we're collecting 98% of our, this current year's tax bills on time, which means as we go from what used to be a 96% collection rate to a 98%, we're collecting more of the current bills on time, which means our delinquents go down. It's an inverse relationship.
So the money's in the regular budget, then, that amount?
No, what it means is that we just don't have as much to collect in delinquents. delinquent taxes because they're paying real time.
Okay, so that's previous years?
Those would be previous years. That inventory would go down, correct.
Okay. And then we have allocation reserves, 3.3 million. What is, what's the details on that?
The details on that, Mr. Denard, are we have approximately $9.5 million sitting in a debt reserve account, which we're using for that purpose. So, and we also have a, about almost $12 million in an internal service fund, which we use to backstop our self-funded program, our self-funded insurance program. We know that as we reach the debt cliff, the debt reserve monies can be burned off over the five years or however it is till we get to that cliff. And additionally, we also know that we can take out some of the backstop, the extra backstop that we have in that fund to the tune of about $5 million or so over the next five years.
And how much of that, 3.3 million for this budget, how much was it for '17, '18? How much do we actually?
I don't have that at my fingertips. I'll have to, I'll have to get to you on that.
All right, thank you.
I still have another question? No, I just wanted to get an idea what an average assessed value would be, just to get an idea.
I couldn't even tell you.
Maybe my colleague here would be.
We have so high and low in, in that area, I couldn't.
200,000, 300,000 assessed value.
There's, there's, there's a vast range.
Yeah. I was just trying to figure out what, what the real tax.
I, I thought you were going to ask that question and, because you asked it before, and I.
I have.
And I said, I just don't have that answer because I, it's so, it's so, such a wide range.
Yeah.
And assessed value is not the market value, so.
I understand that.
Right.
Correct.
But I have professionals here who might be able to answer that.
Yeah, but there's such, there's such a variation with that. You really need to have that information come from the tax assessor's office on that to make sure it's correct.
Okay, fine. I'm just curious as to what the hit's going to be for.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome. I encourage, if anyone has.
Yeah, hang on, hang on, hang on. I mean, everybody's gracious and say thank you, but I want to make sure that the board understands that this has to go for approval next week for us to stay on that, on that target date.
Act one timeline.
So, I'm, I'm hoping that if there's any, from a board perspective, if you have any concerns or anything, to bring it out now, so it could be discussed. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Mr. Fink, we don't foresee any changes between now and next Tuesday.
In this?
Yes.
No.
Okay, so.
Thanks again.
I think we're good to go. All right, we'll go into committee reports before we start. And please, if we can, it's getting late, if we could keep the committee reports short, we don't need a thesis. But we did have an exec session this evening to talk about personnel. So, we're going to jump right into committee reports, curriculum technology.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I believe that Linda's going to give the report. Okay, I'll take, I'll cover that next month, next week. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Policy, Colleen?
Okay, so, the policy committee met on Monday, May 14th, in the Hurdle Learning Center instead of the DO. And we met there because we invited the members of the community to come to talk about use of facilities. But before we jumped into that, we did focus first on policy 103, nondiscrimination in school and classroom practices. Dr. Roach brought the policy back to the committee for clarification following review and feedback from the solicitor. We reviewed the comments and we had some discussion. And also, based on new information received tonight, we did go ahead and we are willing to go with the language that would exclude reporting to, that the reports to OCR would come to policy, and we will accept the other language that is more inclusive on a one-year trial basis and then revisit this topic next year at this time. So, and I think that Mr. Denard wanted that language initially included in there, and after talking with Ms. Haney and myself, we have decided that we will go with that more inclusive language. And basically, the reason for that, as I said, is because it was reported to us that we will not have to report to OCR after next year. So, we'll have all that information. We'll try it for a year, we'll see how it goes, and we'll go from there. We then moved into, moved on to talk about student recognition, formerly known as class rank, and Dr. Roach presented that the administration's recommendation for edits to the policy, which will have a new title, high school commencement recognition. The committee discussed the policy, heard the feedback from the solicitor and talked with Dr. Nugent. They recommend that policy will need to be revised in two years as it does describe the transition away from the use of class rank. So, this has been moved forward from the committee level for a first reading tonight. We also talked about school wellness. Dr. Roach presented a revised school wellness policy with changes that were required by a PDE audit of our school wellness policy. Documentation of the audit results were shared, and the committee agreed to move forward with the revised policy for, forward for a first reading tonight. Then we jumped into use of facilities. And Dr. Roach did present a revised PowerPoint to the committee and to the guests that did attend that meeting. The committee participated in a discussion about the overall policy revisions and recommendations as well as solicited stakeholder feedback so that we could get an idea of what they're thinking of in terms of the door and building security and safety during rentals specifically, as well as the impact and the purpose of having the revised fee schedule for service charges and rental fees. The committee will bring the feedback from the meeting back to committee again, but not until September. We are not going to be discussing that in June, so anyone that was there at that event is welcome to send an email, reach out to us, talk to us if you have anything further to add to the discussion that took place on May 14th. We'd be happy to hear from you and love to do that before the September meeting. After that lengthy discussion, we did just go from there. As I said, it kind of went round and round for a little bit. We talked about how we're trying to bring the community in to help us with the revisions to this policy and not make the decisions in isolation. One of the suggestions, I suppose if you put the comments together that came out of that, is that there may be a need to add somewhat of a subcommittee or a subcategory, maybe under class one, that would be for the booster clubs or the music associations, but those organizations that directly impact the Spring Ford students and their education. And it's interesting because one comment I heard tonight from Mr. Tom Kelly in the very, very beginning was that he talked about how music has such an impact and that it really is just such an important part and such a support for our students, directly for all of our Spring Ford students. So, after giving that some thought, I'll be taking that back to committee. And as I said, if anyone has any further comments, questions, or suggestions as of the outcome of that meeting, please feel free to share them with me, with Dr. Roach, get back to us. And hopefully, we can get back to committee in September with those recommendations, finalize a few things, and then we will bring it to the board. So, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. And also, we are going to pull back policy 903, the public participation in board meetings. We are going to pull that back for further discussion in June. I think it's up for a second reading tonight, but we're going to pull that back. Thank you.
I just have a comment on the high school recognition, commencement recognition policy, that change. The policy states that, that the class rank will not be disclosed unless the student can demonstrate with some written documentation that's required for wherever they're going to go to school or apply to. And the question I'd have for, for Mr. Fitzgerald is, if that information is, is available, can we prevent a student or a parent asking for that information from their child?
Yes, because it will not be a student record under the definition under FERPA. That will be a, essentially proprietary information of the district that cannot be requested and, and provided to.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, extracurricular, Mr. Denard.
Okay, the committee met on March, or May 14th at the Hurdle Learning Center at 6:00. We reviewed the, Mr. Raceg, reviewed the middle school winter and spring sports programs and basically showed that those programs were very successful with the boys' basketball combined, seventh, eighth grade were eight, 28 and O, and the girls' basketball was a combined 25 and two. And some of the, he went over the number of boys that tried out and the number of cuts there were, and it really shows the, the need for the second teams that, for, for some of those sports, particularly the basketball for boys and girls. The wrestling team also had a lot of success, and the good thing about wrestling is that nobody was cut. There were 42 wrestlers and everybody got to wrestle in a match. The, the winter cheer had 35 girls try out and 24 made it. They only cheered at basketball games. The baseball team for seventh and eighth grade had a combined 77 kids try out for 33 spots. So, that, that just illustrates that that program could benefit from a second team as well as girls' softball, which had 13 girls cut. The lacrosse team, that the numbers were not as high for trying out and for the seventh grade and eighth grade, all the, all the players made, the team that tried out. The boys' lacrosse, however, had, had some cuts as well. The track team is probably the biggest sport where there's participation. It was over 200 students for seventh and eighth grade. There's no cuts and all the students that are on the team get to compete in a meet. We also had a presentation from the High School for the Ultimate Frisbee Club, which has about 60 students participating in that. There's probably an average of about 30 students in any one session. The challenge that they have is getting field space outside of the winter. Winter time, they used a turf field, and surprisingly enough, they didn't, they, they really were able to play throughout the winter even though we had a lot of snow this past year. We also had a presentation from the Culture Awareness Club. The goal of that club is to provide the members the opportunity to explore their own culture and learn to appreciate other cultures, and also gives the, the club members the opportunity to develop their leadership skills. The club has about 80 members, and they usually average about 30 members in attendance. A couple of the, one of the big thing they did this year is they had a, a major fundraiser for the Puerto Rican hurricane disaster relief where they collected over 900 pounds of food and sanitary supplies and, and got $1,200 in donations. We also had a lengthy discussion on the activity fees where Mr. McDaniel went over the response to the District One survey that he sent out, and most of the districts did not respond to the survey. Out of, for this past, for this current school year, there was almost 1,600 students paid activity fees with two-thirds of them being involved in one activity. We had a lot of discussion about whether or not the fee should be increased, but based on the fact that the, that in the budget is the bowling and the, and the middle school, the committee doesn't really feel that there needs to be any increase in the activity fee for this coming school year. And that, that concludes my report. Any questions?
Just one quick one. Did you say it's seventh, the seventh and eighth grade middle school basketball, is that combined team?
Well, no, I just added the records together. The seventh grade team had, was 13-0 boys, were 15-0, and they had 35 boys in tryout in seventh grade, 15 made the roster. The eighth grade had 45 boys try out and 14 made the roster.
But they were both undefeated, both teams?
They were both undefeated.
Because what we've done in the past, Mr. McDaniel, I mean, we, when, when these middle school teams are undefeated, we like to, even though they're not, there's not trophy recognition, we still like to recognize them at the. Oh, okay, great. All of them. Good.
All of them, he said.
All of them. All right. Any question? All right, finance. Majority of our meeting was, as you could tell, was related to the budget, so I won't recap that, but we did do a, a quick overview of the monthly reports. The district, the finance committee met May 8th at the district office. We reviewed cash balances, year-to-date revenues, or exceeding about $370,000. We're still waiting for the plan con funds to come in along with medical access funding. The May agenda, we'll have a transfer line item for $1.5 million as the board recalls. As what we do is we, we budget each year at $1.5 million. That goes into the, the cap reserve, which we use for those projects, and that's all related to the 20-year plan, so you'll see that transfer coming up. We're anticipating a year-end of about $500,000 in, in surplus that will, will distribute across one or two of the reserve funds. And we also looked at our earned income taxes, and we are, we budgeted $10 million, and we're, we're zeroing in on that mark, and we should be able to, to hit that as well. One thing that's, we're all happy about is we've seen this year about 14,000 more lunches that have been served district-wide. So, I guess the kids are enjoying the food this year. I don't know how to, but there, there is an upswing. But again, it's positive, which is, you know, a few years ago, we've seen negatives from the food services, so we're, we're happy to see that turn around. Like I said, we didn't get into the budget, but at the end of the meeting, we did have a few other things. There is an assessment appeal settlement long Ford Road in Upper Province. It will come to the board for approval. The appraisal will negotiate with assessed value of $580,000, which equates approximately additional $15,000, or not additional, but it will equate to $15,000 in taxes. The bond sale for an expansion went through as we also anticipated. Moody's rating was AA1, which is excellent, which allowed the better buyer's premium. Unfortunately, because of the position of the state, AA1 is about the best we'll do until the state can get their act together. I did ask about the first call date on the bond, which is about 4.5 years. So, depending on the position of the district and depending on the debt service, we can in 4.5 years make determination to pay that bond off for an expansion, which would make sense, I, I would probably highly recommend that we, and I actually talked about us looking at and developing a strategy that puts the district in that position as well to be able to pay that off, saving in additional interest fees. And pretty much that's it. Any comment or any questions?
The assessment issue that you brought up, Mr. DeBello, is that, did we have an appeal on that, or can you explain a little bit more about what that assessment item was?
There, there was an appeal, and it was negotiated agreement between us and, and the property owner.
So, it was important that we have the right to appeal assessments as opposed to the bill that was trying to be passed by the?
We didn't appeal it. They, they were appealing their assessed value.
So, and we?
We negotiated a settlement.
We negotiated, well, we were allowed to negotiate. Okay, thank you.
Right. What the bill that's being proposed is that it prevents the district from going and appealing assessed values, which is, again, I wish somebody could explain why we would want to do that, but even the, the, the bill sponsor really couldn't explain it. So, I'm not really sure where that's going. You're welcome. Any other questions regarding finance? Nope. All right, then we, property, property was a pretty fast meeting. We did old business. We did get chiller updates regarding the, the chiller that we're going to install, Oaks Elementary, received an approval. It's approximately eight weeks lead time for materials. The high school project was, it was, an update was given, of course. They had, we held a meeting with Limerick Township to review the requirements of the township and the Montgomery County Conservation District. They had their first job conference, and so things are progressing forward. Interesting, Limerick Township has, has continued to take the opportunity to make sure that they charge us every possible dollar associated to fees, permits, and assessed traffic impacts. I, I'm glad that we have a good, close working relationship with the supervisors there, and hopefully that they will see their, see that it would be beneficial to everyone if they would be able to waive some of that things, like they've done for, for developers and, and, and whatnot. So, we'll see what happens there. And you could quote me on that. The new business, 5'7" bathroom, we came to, our attention that we don't have dividers in the, in the boys' room between the urinals, so we are going to be putting some dividers in for a little bit more privacy. We are looking at resurrecting possibly the, the video scoreboard that we talked about a few years ago. a few years ago at the, at Ram McNally Stadium, it's only a matter of time before our scoreboard eventually comes to end of life, and we're just trying to get ahead of the curve and see what makes sense there. And there is discussion relocating the conference room at the administration building, moving it into an area where we would be able to have a little bigger conference room, and also, what, oh, and also re, repurposed existing conference room to now make that our new registration office. Instead of having parents and, and future students coming through and roaming around the district office, we'll be at an isolated area, and it makes more sense to, to house it where it's at. All work will be done in-house, and, and the goal is to have it done over summer. Other business, fields was discussed at Limerick Elementary, and the eighth grade fields for baseball was agreed to follow the permitting procedures that are set forth in place, and also the Babe Ruth Organization is talking about donating a scoreboard, we had a guest there, Brian Wallbridge, and he is looking at donating a scoreboard and possibly batting cages that would be installed at the ninth grade baseball fields as well. The, the batting cages will need further review to avoid possible utility conflicts and also the way they are constructed, but I'm sure that will all get worked out as well. And it'll be on the agenda this evening, well, for approval next week, you'll see some service contracts, which are our annual service contract approvals, so we'll have a few of those as well. Any questions?
I have a comment. One of the pieces of information that I have from Mr. Fink in looking at or in creating a draft and working on the draft for the use of facilities, I see here that Limerick Parks and Recreation, they do use our facilities, so I'd like to make sure that if we're being charged full amounts, that there are, they are accurately being charged for their use of our facilities, even as it stands right now, before the new draft, or it could possibly be proposed in September.
So are you referring to the point that we provide discounts to Limerick Parks and Rec to utilize our facilities?
I think there's a strong possibility, Mr. DiBello, that that is definitely correct, considering the amount of usage that I'm looking at here.
And they're using most of our elementary schools?
That's correct.
So we're providing a discount to them to utilize our facilities?
Right, and I would like that to be reciprocated.
Because, or we pay top dollar for all our permitting fees at Limerick?
We pay everything.
And take every opportunity to make sure to get every last dollar out of us, is that what you're saying?
That is what I'm saying, thank you for making that so clear.
Well, I just want to make sure that that's clear, it's one-sided relationship.
Well, not for much longer, but thank you.
I just, I have a quick question, or just to make sure that we're not in any type of trouble, really. With the Babe Ruth donations going to the baseball, are we going to put ourselves in any type of jeopardy going forward? I understand it's a donation, but it's still baseball representation, and I don't want to put us in jeopardy by taking a donation.
If the question is with regard to private funds utilized for athletic purposes by a school entity and how the Office for Civil Rights might look at it from a Title IX perspective, they've, they've noted in the past that booster contributions are considered as part of our overall expenditures, so a contribution from a third party will have, will, will be a factor as part of the overall analysis.
And, and also the, the field that it's going on could be, it's not an exclusive field, I mean, the fields are used.
Certainly if the fields are used by multiple genders, that is helpful in the analysis.
Right. But, but Don, you do bring up a good point, because I, I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce Bob Hunter, has not, it's not related, but I'm just kind of working that in.
Wow.
But do, Bob, do you go by Bob or Robert, or just not Jim, right? So this is, this is your first meeting, I know you were here like, I guess, last month when we, when we approved your hiring, and, you know, thank you, and we look forward to having you onboard. We'll, we'll go light this month, but get ready for questions.
June will be a winner.
June's going to be a winner, May, May's going to be, oh, we're May.
We're in May.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent Report, Dr. Roach.
Now, wait a minute, Mr. DiBello, maybe, maybe other people have other questions, let me think of that.
Sorry.
I'm sorry to, to take up time, but the scoreboard that you mentioned that we're looking of, at buying or approving, is there any effort made to get an outside source for funding these things in exchange for some advertising, or how does this work?
The whole point in a video board is, is what we looked at before, was that where we could actually sell advertising.
Right.
And the goal would be to be able to pay for the, the total expenses of that board at, at, at a future point, but it does give, it does give us a better advertising, other school districts have done it, and have been very successful in, in getting video boards and, and doing, you know, men, you know, many types of advertisements during the Friday night under the lights, or, or whatever it may be.
So it should be able to pay for itself in the long run?
Over time, correct.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Also, Mr. DiBello, I just want to point out that concerning the high school construction project, every couple of weeks, we'll be putting into the weekly memo an update on the progress of that project.
Assistant Superintendent Report?
Thank you. I want to take a moment to share with everyone that this morning I had the honor and pleasure to visit and support our Springfield students as they participated in the Montgomery County Special Olympics taking place at Satterton High School. Each year, I'm amazed at the passion and energy from the students, and appreciate the teachers, instructional assistants, and parental support from Springfield and all surrounding schools. The students from across the county had a perfect weather day for the event, and from the students and staff I spoke with, each student was enjoying their, their special Olympic experience, truly was a great, great day for them. And then some breaking news, many of you may or may not know, Springfield Area High School has been recognized by the U.S. News and World Report as one of the best high schools in America, the U.S. News rankings include data on more than twenty-thousand-five-hundred public high schools in fifty states in District Columbia. Schools were awarded gold, silver, and bronze medals based on their performance on the state assessments and how well they prepare students for college. Springfield High School was awarded a silver medal and is ranked one-thousand-four-twenty-first in the nation and forty-first among Pennsylvania high schools. So congratulations to the entire K to twelve faculty, staff, and students and school board for this fantastic accomplishment, as it takes teachers, assistants, and administrators at all levels to build up the students at each grade level to be able to perform at their highest level at high school.
I'm always happy when you could provide great, wonderful news like you do. And we moved up, I think last time we were in the top ten percent, and based on the numbers that I saw on the report, we're, we're now like down to, like, when it's seven percent, so it's, we're, we continue to, to raise the bar of education here at Springfield. Other breaking news, before we get on to all these exciting solicitors report, I got a, a message coming in that we're going to get a, a brief legislative report from Christina.
Thank you. Just very quickly, as many of you know, both the House and Senate were in recess due to the recent primaries, and so Senate just regrouped yes, today, and the House will regroup tomorrow. The hope is that there will be a budget, the budget will be soon, and along with that budget will be a bill that will include regulations for schools, known as the school code bill. There's a couple of things that look to be potentially included in the school code bill for the upcoming year, and so I think it's just important that we touch on them. One is Senate Bill Two, which is, again, the vouchers, I know we've talked about it, we've talked about it to death, it is so important, at this point, the, the wording includes that all kindergarten and first grade students, regardless of whether their school is in the lower fifteen percent or not, so that includes every student coming into Springfield at the kindergarten and first grade level, will be eligible for vouchers. Those dollars are then going to be allocated towards, or those, those families could use those dollars towards private education, so our taxpayer dollar, that we're talking about our budget, and we're talking about, you know, how are we going to get there, those dollars are then going to be allocated and shifted towards private schools where there's no oversight. So it's really important that as, as individual school board members, as a, a board altogether, I think we need to revisit the referendum that we, we looked at, I think that's really important that we look at that for next week's meeting, and, and as a community, we need to reach out to, you know, anybody who's on the Senate Education Committee, but also reach out to any of your legislators and make sure that they understand the impacts of this bill and the impacts that it will have on our community. So again, that's a hot topic, and that's likely, if it does pass Senate Education Committee and move to the full Senate, it could likely be appended to the school code, so we're keeping our eye on that. Also, House Bill nineteen-fourteen is another one, and I did share with Mr. Fink earlier this evening, it's with regards to third-party services and contracts, and a significant amount of effort that districts will have to go through, including fee projections for any outside contracting for non-educational purposes, that's going to include custiers, it's going to include, you know, I mean, it's going to include our, our custodial work, it's going to be for new contracts and renewals, it's a very onerous process, and, and it could actually have a negative impact from a financial perspective on our district, so it's really important, again, that we take a look at that. Again, I just did share that with Mr. Fink this evening, so hopefully we'll be able to put together a little bit of a, you know, an idea of what that could do to us from a, a financial perspective, and maybe share that next week in my full report, but again, that's, the, both of these are actually on the respective education committees for tomorrow, so that's just a quick heads up and something we need to be very diligent and keep our eye on.
This change in Senate Bill Two, this just came up this week?
Yes.
Who's the, who's the culprit on this? Do we know?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I can bring you that information next week.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it would probably be Senator Eichelberger, who's the chairman of that committee, and he's going to la, I mean, so he, he would bring it forward for a committee vote.
Thanks.
So keep in mind, when we were talking about Senate Bill, that was one of the things I talked about, was that, you know, and we, we, as a board, decided not to buy on to support the resolution, but I talked about that, what they're, what the, what's going on in Harrisburg is that they just keep taking these creep, like creep, like they're creeping forward as far as what they're trying to do with these voucher systems, so little by little, they're taking like these baby steps, or whatever you want to call it, and this is just one more that they took that's going to have a dramatic impact, and, you know, and Mr. Fink, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're somewhere between two and a half to three million dollars now that we're putting out of our budget that are going to charter private schools. So that's taxpayer money that is, is leaving this district and going to fund, and I don't care what anybody says, majority of those charter schools and private schools are businesses, because somebody's getting rich off of them.
Well, Mr. DiBello, I want to add to that, not only are we, not only is three million dollars leaving, you know, our, our school district and going to fund these charter schools, but there's absolutely no oversight. We have no oversight onto the quality of education that students from our district are receiving, and yet we have this, this three-million-dollar liability annually, that three million dollars would have made up that, that tax increase that we're looking at for this year's budget. So let's be very clear that this is only going to continue to grow, this number, based on, you know, with this voucher plan, and that's going to take resources away from our students in this district, or it's going to drive our, our property taxes up, and neither of those options are acceptable here at Springfield or anywhere else in Pennsylvania.
Well, this, this change is definitely goes beyond baby steps, that's a huge change, this increase.
Okay, any, any other comment? Solicitors report, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I have no report this evening.
You're awesome. All right. Meeting minutes, A, any questions? Personnel, A through L.
I have some questions on K, this new position for the coordinator of safety, security, and emergency preparedness. The word development creates in here fourteen times, does that mean that we don't do any of those things today?
No, it doesn't, it means it, it's, it's part of everybody's duty, if you're administrator, we, we have those jobs in our roles, but the, the fact is, safety, security, emergency preparedness has become more than just something that can be tagged on to somebody's job description, it is a full-time job, making sure that all those pieces are in play and they're operating at a very high level. We had originally looked at adding two additional officers to our, to our personnel for next year, but in looking at that, we certainly think that one of those individuals needs to take, really, the, take control of emergency preparedness within the district and, and oversee the safety and security functions within the district.
Yeah, I think we'd be better served on determining how we want to secure the buildings rather than add an administrator, because this is going to come at an expense that could take away from adding real security people, and, and security's not our core competency, and what companies do and institutions do is, in many cases, is they, they, they look the, the higher outsourced things that aren't their core competency, because you don't have the resources or the expertise, and it's very expensive to create that and develop that and, and manage it internally, I really think we should look at security firms doing our security for us, including armed security in the schools, because that's their expertise, they can keep up with the latest in, in security procedures and practices and training that it would be very expensive and difficult for us to do, particularly things like when somebody's out on the, or sick, or, or on vacation, it's more difficult for us to have somebody be a sub for those people, whereas if you have a firm that include that in the contract, and they can provide the security at a lower cost than we could do it ourselves. So I think before we move forward adding an administrator, we should really look at doing that and, and as opposed to hiring an administrator and, and taking a significant, because it could cost with benefits over a hundred thousand dollars for that job, and we could, I think, wis, more wisely put that into looking at outsourcing security from a really competent firm.
Well, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I've looked at that as far as the outsourcing piece, but if we outsource, it's going to cost us a significant amount of money, and all we're going to get out of that is literally a security guard in the building, period. We're not going to get any of the administrative function as far as emergency preparedness planning, helping us carry out those plans, promulgate those plans, directing the officers that we currently have on staff, it, it's, it's something that it is, it is indeed a full-time job, making sure that the district is safe and secure and prepared for any and all emergencies, and so I, I'm going to stick with my recommendation that we indeed put that kind of a position in place, and as I said, that we are, we are looking at the budget to add two officers, but one of those officers would have an expanded role, still police officer, but would have an expanded role to look at all those pieces within the district.
Yeah, I, I think we need to act sooner or later, because we've seen many incidences just in the last few months, and the, the, some of the recent ones, they would stop the perpetrator was an armed security person in the school, and it showed the value, particularly the one in, I think it was in Maryland, and, and just recently in, in Illinois, the armed security people, or person is what prevented more death, and one of the things that seems to be a common denominator in these attacks is they're either students or former students, and in many cases, those people were, were bullied, or in the past are being bullied currently, and so I really think that we should probably take a look at, reexamine what we do for bullying, because the, the last two that happened just recently occurred from, from bullying.
You're jumping all over the place, I'm trying to follow you.
I'm not jumping all over the place.
Yeah, you are, now you're going to bowling, I mean, we're talking about a job description.
No, I'm saying that this is all part of the security plan.
Okay, what, then, what does bowling have to do with an armed security plan? I mean, I'm with you, and I'm agreeing with all the things, I'm just trying to follow you.
Well, I'm making a statement that we need to look at, that, that's really part of the, of the security, is, is making sure you're not bullying, because we don't want to create people that are going to do these things, because they are very related, because they're almost always students, and many times there are people who are bullied, so...
I, I'm, I'm not aware of those students having a profile of being bullied, I do know that they, many of them have profiles of having difficulties, social, emotional difficulties within school, I know certainly the last one on Friday, they're scratching their head as to what happened with that one, and that particular student in Santa Fe. So I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that, I, I can't agree with the whole idea that the, that our school shooters are, are out there and they're, they've been bullied, and so they, they take this as their option to, to, to exact revenge. Certainly... Certainly, we have focused heavily in the district upon providing mental health services for our students and trying to make sure that they're getting the services that they need. In addition, since last year, I have been working with the Anti-Bullying Committee to create a comprehensive district-wide anti-bullying plan, which is now ready to vet out with the other administrators and roll out for next year. So we are addressing that. It is a concern of ours, and we want to make sure that we're consistent in addressing those needs. But really, the social-emotional piece, we've focused a lot on within the district to make sure that we're doing our best to make sure that we don't have one of those scenarios.
The Santa Fe incident, the perpetrator...
Could we please?
Hold on, let me make a point.
No, I'm sticking to the agenda. Do you have questions related to the job description? That's where we're at.
No, I'm going to make my point, because you tend to make lots of points. So let me just make a point on this.
You can make your point. I want to get through the agenda. There's a whole section of board comment that you can make your point.
Well, this is all tied together. I just want to comment that the Texas incident occurred last week, the perpetrator, according to the media, said that he only, he shot kids he didn't like. He didn't shoot the ones that he did like. So that was a bullying incident.
I understand, but that doesn't constitute bullying. There's lots of people that I don't like, but I certainly don't shoot them.
Any questions related to the job description? Out of all that, Mark, somewhere in there, I agree with, we are adding two, what was proposed was, and we talked about this at finance, adding two police officers. One of the police officers will have dual responsibility to take on and be basically the keeper of this security and emergency prep, preparedness plan, working with our security firm. But the question really becomes, and this is a board question, we're hiring two. We have 12 buildings. So that will bring 11. What is it? Huh? The district office, is that 11? I can't even keep track. We don't count the, all right, so 11 buildings. So the question to the board, and I think is kind of what you're saying in there somewhere, Mark, is that do we want to have armed security in every building? And knowing that, you know, then that's why I was asking about the budget, because that will have a direct impact on the budget that we have to approve next week.
Well, you're certainly not going to put armed security in every building for $188,000.
No, I understand that.
It would be significantly more, to the tune of approximately, if I remember correctly, when we look back at that, we're probably close to three-quarters of a million dollars if we put them in for the entire school year.
That's, yeah, I think that's why we need to look at creating an RFP and sending that out and seeing what comes back.
Would it require some kind of...
I'm sorry, Mr. Denner, didn't we already do that?
We did a, we had a security assessment updated.
No, I just, I just went out, and there's a couple of security firms out there that I did get quotes from, for what they would do to provide services.
The two that we got, one was a brochure, didn't have any prices in it. And that's not, that's not an RFP.
I understand it's not an RFP. What they did do, though, they sent me a little bit later. That's what I had immediately. They did send me their pricing.
Yeah, I think now we need to move to a little more in-depth look at this via a committee or ad hoc committee or whatever, instead of just plodding along and hoping nothing happens. We don't want to say we should have done something the day after the incident.
Well, I certainly don't want to plod along, and I certainly don't want anything to happen. But as you have referenced, we have had input on areas of security, and we are indeed acting upon those recommendations.
I think at the end of the day, everyone sitting at this table wants the same thing. We want a safe school district. And right now, we've talked about having two potential police officers next year. We're looking to go through the budget next week, so I think we need to stay where we are right now. I mean, I'm putting it out to the board. I mean, you're all sitting there quiet. I mean, you got to, you got to come, I'm asking the board, what's your position? Because I don't want to have this conversation next week when we're just about ready to prove the agenda, and then I'm looking at almost a percent change to the budget or tax increase.
I think I'm with Clinton on that, that we need to stay the course. This person that's going into this position, this new position, would be, and I heard this a couple of times, would be in a dual role. So not only would he or she be overseeing the overall, almost acting as a chief on school property. Is that, would that be a correct way to understand that?
In a very, very narrow definition, but yeah, we're looking at really, the whole idea of emergency preparedness goes beyond just active shooter. Anytime we have a, you know, God forbid, we have a natural disaster in the district, we have a hurricane, or, I mean, excuse me, a tornado, or something happens. I know the first year I was here, we had an incident where we had transformers blow up. That was very touch and go there for a while, as far as evacuating the building, et cetera. So, you know, hopefully we don't have those kind of things, but certainly we want to broaden that individual's responsibility out to make sure that in all areas, with the safety, the security, and the emergency preparedness, that's part of their, what they're tasked with to coordinate all that, even within the district and with local agencies.
So really, someone that is directing the people that we have on staff to go into the appropriate action, take the appropriate action, and make sure that there's a safety plan, no matter what the emergency might be? Would that be more accurate to say?
That's correct. That's correct. We currently spend a lot of time with our police chiefs, working with them, but we certainly are, this has certainly become a front burner issue across the nation. It's no longer just something, as I mentioned earlier, that's tacked on to an administrator's job description. It requires a much higher level of expertise than has been given to it, and so that, hence my recommendation.
So not that I wouldn't agree with Mr. Denner, that I wouldn't like to see even more, whether it's security, no matter how you look at it, whether you want to call it more Springfield Police or an outside agency or what have you, but a larger presence is what I took away from what you said. But I think what Mr. Jackson said, that, you know, moving forward, this is the plan right now, these are steps, it's progression, it's moving forward to ensure the safety. So I would go with what we have.
But I think we need a formal plan to look at this, I mean, some formal way to look at this.
And I think, I think we can do that going forward, but we need, we need measures in place now. So we put this in place, and then we continue to look at it and continue to have it evolve.
Well, I think we need to have, be proactive and not have things evolve, and not do things incrementally without a plan, because...
Well, I mean, I think we paid Dr. Gooden to make these evaluations and to make these judgments, and he has studied this problem much more than anybody on this board has studied, I'm sure. And I think the buck stops with him. And when he makes a decision as what is the appropriate means to secure our schools, I think we should give him credit for having looked at this carefully, instead of us shooting from the hip here, because something doesn't look right to us, because I don't think we have the expertise, anybody on this board has the expertise, to make a critical judgment about what Dr. Gooden's evaluation of this problem has been.
If there's a plan, then I'd like to see it.
I personally, as a parent, have been pretty happy over the many years that I've had kids here with sort of this comprehensive way that Springfield has looked at safety. They've had security officers, there's been a lot of security getting into buildings. As a parent, when I volunteer, there's quite a clearance procedure. There's a large amount of mental health that has increased over literally the past decade. There's Friend Watch, which my kids have used to help other students. And there's, I think, a pretty good growing community that's aware of trying to take care of everybody and look after everybody as a community, which is why I think I like the fact that my kids know the officers, they know the security people, they feel comfortable with them, and I like how it's slowly increased as the population has increased. So I've been pretty happy with the, what I feel is a pretty comprehensive look, and the whole Alice program that I think was better than the last one, because it needed to get better, because we needed more security. So that's my...
Absolutely, Mrs. Fazini. And also, Dr. Gooden, I really commend you for that bullying program and the initiative that you took there with that. I've had parents say to me that that's been, they're happy to be a part of that. I know I referred a student in a family to you, and you addressed all of that within the guidelines of that program. So I think that's just another piece that Mrs. Fazini was referring to in terms of being proactive and trying to take care of our community.
I would agree with this being our most prudent next step. I do think that this is something that is not looked at once and done. I think that this is looked at very regularly to make determinations as to what, you know, our continued needs are. So I think that we stay the course and go with the suggestion, the recommendation that Dr. Gooden has put before us, and understand that this is not, you know, this is the point in time, it's not the end of time. It is a continual evolution of security in this realm. So I think that it's going to need to be looked at and refreshed very regularly and determined what the next steps are.
And I agree with Dawn on that aspect of it, especially given the fact that we have a budget to consider next week. And you want to talk about adding nine security guards, what that would cost? I mean, we have to consider the budget, and I think we do, should continue with the program Dr. Gooden has been working hard on, and we continue with that.
I agree with Mrs. Heaney. This is the next step, not the last step, and there will be many, many steps in between. I think one of the benefits of this approach is that we will have an expert here who will be able to better help us, who is proficient in the security arena and who will better be able to help direct, because I think certainly by us having a committee to address this as an issue, whether ad hoc or tagged on to property or another committee, is great. But if we don't have the knowledge and expertise in the room to make the right decisions, then I don't think that we're setting ourselves up for success. So I think that certainly as this individual is identified and brought on, of course, the support of Chief Skelton and the other local chiefs has been phenomenal, and the continued partnership and support. They're very responsive, they're here immediately, and, you know, I think, I think that that's something that we need to really appreciate within our community and recognize as well.
So pertaining to the job description, somewhere we start this conversation, I do know when we talked about it at finance, that we are looking at adding, each year adding one to two additional, you know, as well. So this is just a point in time where we, where we, and originally, we were adding, we were looking at, from a personnel standpoint, we're looking at only adding one this year, but because of the way the bonds came in with, for the high school expansion and all that, we were able to make a recommendation and hire two as a starting point. So that's kind of where we're at from a personnel standpoint. But more certainly, as a board, we could continue to ask Dr. Gooden over time, as far as if we wanted to add additional resources. But keep in mind, two of the instances that Mr. Denner referred to, both times, those students walked in a door. And they believed that the one that recently happened down in Texas, the doors were either unlocked or another student let him, let that person in. So, which is a whole other issue why we have the assessments from the security company. Moving on, finance, A through P. Property, A through F. Programming, Curriculum, A through C.
I just want to make a notation that while there are no numbers in A at this moment, we have received several of the numbers back, but those numbers will be filled in for next week's meeting. And this is again, to put us in the forefront of ordering our refresh equipment for the next calendar year.
Could we in the board memo on Friday, get the memo out, Dr. Gooden, that actually has the numbers filled in before the meeting Monday night or Tuesday night?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding programming curriculum, conferences and workshops? Other business? Board comment?
I have a comment. The, there was a SNAP fundraiser that was scheduled for June 2nd. That has been postponed to the early fall due to some scheduling conflicts and some unforeseen circumstances. So please stay tuned for details and keep your schedule open. I think we're looking at September 22nd, but it will not be taking place on June 2nd. Thank you.
I just have a very quick announcement, especially for these two students who have been here all night listening to us, and they're here, you know, twice, twice a month, having to put up with us. Tomorrow night is the Springfield Film Festival at the Colonial in Phoenixville, and it's at Ray 6, 6:30. So, but we'll highlight all of the different short films and commercials and cool projects that all of these kids have done. So if you have a chance, please come out.
I just want to say real quick, I know Mary Pat Long is here this evening. I'm not sure if you'll be here next week or not. Well, I mean, it was on the agenda that you decided to retire this year, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for all your hard work over, I mean, how many years are you in the district now?
Just over 20.
Just over 20, and I know you came in as a teacher, and then you're definitely, then you became a teacher on assignment, which then moved into house principal at the middle school. And then from there, you went over to the principal of Brook Elementary, and successfully planned and orchestrated and had a beautiful event for the 25th, 25th...
Yeah, the 25th.
Yeah, 25th anniversary of Brook Elementary. So you've been throughout the district, and, you know, and we, you know, we're excited to have you on board, but we're also excited to see you enter this next stage in your life and enjoy life. That's the plan. So thank you very much for everything that you've done here in Springfield. If you'd like, we'll save a seat for you next week. Just saying.
No comment.
Yeah. You're always welcome to come to any board meeting.
That's my idea. I suppose it, you never know when I wish to.
There you go. With that public to be heard? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn, please, somebody.
You had three of them already.
So move, meeting adjourned.